Welcome, everybody. I just been here last time, I was in Colorado. It was hotter there than it is here, so. As neat as I thought it was gonna be, but it was fun. Okay, let's start out, public comment period.
Go ahead.
No, okay. Consent agenda, the minutes from the previous meeting, the appropriations, and lake cabin transfer, GE1. Do I hear a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda as a proposal.
Okay. Second?
I'll say it.
Okay. It's been moved in second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six to the right. Okay. For just a moment, I just would like to say, I don't know how much time you all spend on the minutes and the appropriations, but it would be nice if we would, if you have any questions, be sure and ask Nick ahead of time. Occasionally, there's something that comes on, so, you know, if you'd study those a little bit and let him know ahead of time. Because we have talked to Cindy, and she said occasionally, there's things in there, and I'm sure we miss them because we zip through them so fast on our phones or our computers or whatever, but I just thought we'd mention that. Okay, old business, Highway 177, highway resurfacing update. Nick?
Should tell they started. The plan is to be done with the chip and seal all the way through town out through Central Town by Thursday. The parking places downtown in the 100 block will be closed. They're supposed to block them off this evening. It'll be blocked off Wednesday and Thursday, then open back up Friday morning. The reason for that is because those spots don't get a lot of traffic. They're gonna get, so we need more curing time on those than you do on something that's getting ran over. That way you get, it lasts longer. Then next week sometime, they'll come back after the chips have been down for a while and sweep everything off, and then do the striping, and then they will be done.
Are they going to do the sweeping on this street as well?
They'll do sweeping everywhere.
Oh, okay. I knew that we had talked about Main Street, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, they're gonna sweep everything, because they have to put trash down the center half through here as well, so they're gonna look through and sort the dusters and everything out. And people are gonna be moved out.
Yeah.
I have a question there. Nick, can you give the council an update on the overage costs on this project?
It's gonna vary a little bit, but it's about $40,000, $40,000 to $45,000. You figure with a project that size, you'll have about a 10% to 15% overage. At the $45,000 mark, we're exactly about 10,000, or 10% over. And that has to do with, when we started this project, it's been about two years, and the road has deteriorated worse, so we had to do some things. But we've also had some cost savings. The intersection down there at Wood Street, we actually, underneath that brick, was concrete, so they were just able to overlay all that and not put in AV3 and do a bunch of dirt work down there. So you have all cost savings there. They ended up having to do more cracked sealing than they thought they originally were gonna have to, because the roads cracked a lot worse than they originally did the engineering on it, so, but yeah.
Was there a little bit of difference too for some of that handicap?
Yeah, so originally what they wanted to do downtown was put in this prefab crossing that may have fire glass or whatever, but I think the council probably want that, they want to match what's at the intersection there, because that's the reason they stepped in with that.
They're slippery too, those fire glasses are a little bit slippery, I think.
Yeah, we didn't get the firework class one, we got the composite one.
Yeah, that's good.
Because they last longer. But those little silly things, they're about $1,000 a piece, which is crazy, because it always is a piece of composite. But, so there's some of the expenses, and then a lot of it was just deterioration from, you know, being a few years ago since you had the engineering done. So I think, before we do 56 and put it up again, we'll have Brady come back and look at 56 again before we decide to apply for the 56 project to make sure we include everything, so we know, so it's not a surprise.
Especially, we've had some bird winters and, you know, lots of solvency stuff.
Yeah, well, it's been a while since we done anything for 56 and 177, so.
I've been thinking about this, and I just, I wanna make sure that we're doing everything the right way. I'm just wondering, maybe our legal counsel can give us, when we go over a project like that, do we really need the council's action for that, that much more above the contract?
The answer to that depends on what the original contract provided. Sometimes they'll build in the overage, do you know if that's the case?
No, theirs was based off, it was an estimate, and they said, and they said 10% to 15%.
And the estimate is what they've gone over, some percent.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that would probably necessitate, for odd purposes and so on, action by the council.
I would, I would think that from now on, we probably wanna have a special meeting or something to get.
Well, I talked to the mayor in Keith, I'm trying to get Larry, but the problem was they needed a decision within the hour, because they're starting work. And it's one of those deals where you're, do you stop the work, or do you get the work done? You know, it's kind of a toss-up, so.
You're just hearing from our legal counsel, that thinks that we should do it, so.
Well, I get that, Mark.
We probably should, yeah.
So, in the future, I'll do that, I'll stop the work, and we'll get together, and we'll...
Or make sure the contract states that, so.
Yeah, you could, you know. As part of the contract, you build in a...
Yeah, and I have it back on the contract, that may have been in there, I don't remember, it's been...
And that might be the best way to go.
Other than, because if we have a special meeting, we have to have a meet, we have to have a meeting, a special meeting, to set us, well, huh?
No, you can have an emergency, you can call it.
Emergency, I guess, yeah.
But anyways, yeah. So it was just one of those things that came up, that they were getting ready to do the work, and we had to make a decision, I consulted with the mayor and the two council members on that committee, so.
Like I said, and as I had this discussion with you before, I had no doubt that the council would be okay with it, but legally, you know, we have to do what's legal.
Well, I understand that point, yeah. And I'll go back on the contract, I don't think that violates anything that was in the contract, so.
All right.
Okay, I'll pencil it right now. Okay, North Riverwalk extension update.
Okay, as the plans now for the solar runoff prevention plan, which is what they need to get approved in order to do the pre-construction meeting. I talked to Joe Pala, he's waiting on a couple of signatures on that plan, and then we can schedule a pre-construction meeting. They're anticipating this week or next week to do that, and then the contractor will start the day of the pre-construction meeting. They don't reckon that's gonna be until we know when the pre-con is, the pre-construction meeting is, but there is a little bit of movement on that, so.
You anticipate that we will, we'll just overages on that too, because of the delay?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, I don't think, but that deal over there is different, because you don't have deterioration or anything like that. It's dirt work and concrete, electrical and the poles. So I can't imagine getting overdo over there.
One of the contractors' obligation to start a long time, the contractor neglected to start a long time.
Yeah, he's only got like...
So there shouldn't be any overages at all.
We're staying with the original contract, correct?
Yes, yeah. He has, I think, 10 or 12 days to start. So if KOD isn't approved, the plan in 10, 12 days, KOD can technically go to his bond and hire a company to do the work, and come in and take care of it, because it's a KOD contract. We've already sent them their check for $96,000, which was our cost of that project over there. So, so we'll see, just kind of, we can see, they're supposed to start August 3rd, that obviously didn't happen, so.
It's good to get it started, glad we're getting there. Okay, thank you. New business, utilities committee on the Riverbank Brewery with Jesse and Deidra.
I was supposed to say utilities committee recommendation, but anyways. You guys wanna talk about it, or you want me to talk about it?
Well, we want you to start, and if we need to hop in, we'll hop in.
Okay, so yesterday, or last week, Jesse had contacted me regarding the brewery they're putting together over there, and his current water service. What the engineering plans, according to Jesse, says that in order to do what they wanna do in there, they need two-inch line, two-inch meter, and stuff like that. I think right now, they have a one-inch line, a one-inch meter. The utilities committee got together yesterday and met with Jesse and Deidra, and kind of trying to figure out a way to work with them, and kind of what we came up with is the 50-50 grant, we have to use those funds by December, I have to submit a report in December, they'll be using those funds. If I don't, we have to send those funds back to the Minnesota project. What the committee's recommending is that we allow Jesse to reapply for the remaining funds, there's only 17,775 left in that account, because that money needs to be used up, so.
How much would you say?
1,775.
Okay, and that is for the sewer, the larva, I mean, not sewer, the larva?
That's to help out with the cost of the water. The cost of the water to install it and get the meter and all that stuff is $4,103.23, from Eric's estimate.
And then we also mentioned about the meter too.
Yeah, the difference in the meter cost.
Since we're getting ready to go through a program where all the meters are gonna get replaced anyway, but what came up in conversation is that we do feel like that there is a need for a new business incentive program within the city of Council Grove. There's nothing in place right now to help out this new business in town, so we would encourage that, Councilman Burner, if you can speak up, if I'm speaking out of turn here, but we would encourage that the council look to have the Economic Development Committee look into coming up with something that we can help new businesses. Especially in this particular instance, they're taking a building that was probably on its last slab, and they're gonna bring it back to life, put a new business into town, gonna create new tax base for the city. We just felt like that we needed to do something to help. And since there was nothing in place to do that, we felt like that this, if the council waived the one-time-only application for it, this would help this new business. Would that, would you, go ahead?
Yeah, and as it pertains to this project, we currently have no one else who's applied for any 50-50 grant money, so kind of up against the headline now to use it, so we thought it would be good, but a good use here.
We have talked a little bit, I mean, I understand what you're saying, and I think this is good, I think. We get a little sidetracked here, but what you're talking about is some kind of a new business incentive, you know, for new businesses. And I was under the impression, when we talked about this earlier, that we were to leave that to greater Morse County development. And so, that's something maybe we need to work with them on, and see what they might have, because from the very jump, I've always felt that that's something we need, is a business incentive.
Well, I think most progressive cities that are trying to grow have some sort of incentive to attract new businesses, and I think, we don't have anything in the budget for it this year, but I would encourage, and I see what you're saying, Mayor, but maybe not rely on them for this, us coming up with a line item, or we can, we can create something ourselves, and then maybe Morse County to have something on top of that.
I agree with you fully, I just think we're stepping on there, definitely we said that before.
Yeah, we give GMVCC, I think, $10,000 a year towards that stuff, so.
It's something that we need to communicate with them about a little bit, because I do think that business incentive is really important if you're trying to grow, which is our goal, you know, to get more businesses.
Well, it just gives them another quiver in their deal, Carol, and their quiver to talk to businesses about coming here, so.
Mayor, you were a part of the council, as same as I was, when we had the new housing incentive, which I was not in favor of that program. I visited with everybody who had used that program and asked them bluntly, if you hadn't had that incentive, would you went ahead and build a new house? And they said yes. My thought is, we need to be helping people in this community that are, that are trying to bring back buildings and houses from, from the death that happens to these buildings. And I think, I personally would support a program that would do that. We have such a shortage of housing in this community, that something along that, for us housing and businesses, really needed. That's just my opinion.
You have hit on it, and it's coincidental that Jesse is here, because I have planned to call Jesse and talk to him about the economic development, city economic development group, heading down that path, you know, the housing path. I know that there's a group, and I know that there's at least four or five investors that are very seriously interested, so we'll get, we'll move down along that line, especially housing. Nothing business is important too, but housing right now is something that we have a chance and opportunity to do. Interest is low, and things are, you know, moving and stuff, so. Anyway, but let's get back to the utilities committee recommendation then, so why don't you just state your actual recommendation?
Well, we were, we were recommending that we allow Jesse and Deidra to reapply for another 50-50 grant. The current action is that you're only, we're allowed to do it once. But under this situation, because we haven't had anybody else apply, and we do have the funds, and they do have the need, and we wanted to get council's approval, we go ahead and let them use the money.
Okay, and then also knowing that the meter, the new meter, you know, that, you want that?
Yeah, we would absorb the cost of the meter, but that's all through the program.
CTS program.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so would one of you want to, are there any other conversations?
You mentioned something about waiving an application, what did you mean by that?
Well, meaning that you could only apply one time.
Okay, that application.
So basically waiving the, the rules to that.
I think that's really the only thing that we need council approval for, was that, you know.
So kind of a variance from...
It's basically, if we don't use it, we're gonna lose it, and here's an opportunity to put it back in the community.
So would one of you wanna make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll say it.
Okay. It's been moved in second to allow the River, River Walk, River Bank, I always want to say Riverside, sorry, Riverbank Brewery, an opportunity to apply for the second 50-50 grant to help with their water service. All those in favor? Opposed? Yeah, motion carries six to the right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I just wanna say one thing, we did, like, the marks mentioned that we did use that 50-50 earlier before, and we did use that right away, and we were awarded it, and we put a new roof on the building, it was $33,000, and we got money from that 50-50, no, $3,000 to go towards that. So we, we did put that money to good use, and we really appreciate everything that you do to help get this hopper down.
Can you tell you have a new roof?
Yes.
Yeah, to make things outside and not inside.
That's a good sign.
Yes.
So, good. You're excited for it to go.
Heck, those cinnamons did, there's a lot of good stuff going on, and I appreciate everybody on council in the planning and effort that goes into that with the Riverwalk and the theater, the new sidewalks, chip and seal, all these projects that are getting done. It definitely is noticed, and although there might be some upset people about traffic jams in Council Grove, and it's well worth it, so thank you all for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
It does make a huge difference, and it makes us want to continue to try to make this deal a little closer.
Well, you know, if there's anything else you need, be sure and let us know.
Will do.
See what we can do.
Thanks, buddy.
Good luck.
Thank you.
We're excited.
They're starting construction, so.
Any projections at all, Deidra?
Oh, it's supposed to be 45 days on construction from when they've started, but you don't know how that goes, and then we have to get all our permitting from the federal companies.
Yeah, it really is 2020.
But we'll see.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Moving on, city lake committee recommendation, end cap extension for C44.
Yeah, it really won't be too. Doesn't matter. It doesn't matter.
I can read this as good as you guys can, so. The lake committee is recommending an end cap extension for 24 feet for the construction of a 30 by 30 garage, and this is for C44.
And they can tell you what they see, because I would highly recommend, obviously.
But it's also do the cabin.
Yep, I'll see, yeah. Anybody have any concerns of what you're recommending, recommending that we do?
Yes, we recommend approval.
Okay, any questions, concern?
We're just saying one at a time, is that correct?
I think so, okay. We might as well, that way we don't have a problem. So do I hear a motion?
So do.
Okay. Second?
I'll say it.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. It's been moved in second to approve the end cap extension for C44. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six to the right. The next one is an end cap extension for I34.
Yeah, and they're requesting, lake committee recommendation is to allow for 170 feet of placement of a 10 by 16 storage shed that is currently located at the lake's edge.
They need 170 feet for a shed.
Yeah, this one's kind of unique, Mark, and here's a, over the ravine waterway that runs up the south side of the property, so it tapers up like this. They got a septic up there already, and they're down to pretty minimal width, so they gotta go further up the hill to get away from the septic, and because it's narrowing, that's why it ends up so far up there. They're actually in a ravine, but they're...
They also have an existing small shed that they're moving up to this area, that our goal is to get all those moved together. They're not supposed to be down there.
Just they'll put this one in compliance with that, to get it out, back away from the 100-foot water.
My memory sometimes isn't the best, but I remember when we came up with this ordinance, I think one of the things, and Larry might have been employed at that time, did not include mobile buildings in part of that ordinance.
Permanent structures.
Yeah.
We just had a variance request not long ago on that same subject.
So then we actually need a variance on this, then?
The, well, the garage.
Now, this is a shed.
This is a shed.
Oh, okay, that's, I'm gonna...
You're gonna make it permanent, though?
Yeah, this is probably, I would assume, I was assuming this is gonna be permanent, because it's sitting on a concrete foundation now, down at the lake.
Oh, so it's not on skids?
No, I don't think it's on concrete, and that's what I remembered it.
It's not like one of these sheds that you can buy over here?
No. And James is not allowing future cabin owners to put sheds by the water, so I guess moving this one will get that away from the water, so.
Like I said, I just remember there was something about sheds on this ordinance.
Right, this is exactly what we discussed last meeting, like Larry's talking about. And they are building a boathouse at the lake, so that's the, that's the other half of this equation, that where they're taking that shed out, they're building a big boathouse down at the lake, and then they're taking this, this building out, and they want it relocated.
Photograph shows you a lot better idea of the terrain.
Yeah, it's a different line.
On both sides, there is...
I also have it up here too, if you want to see it.
Oh, you're starting from there. The picture, the actual... Photograph?
Oh, the photograph of it, oh, yeah.
The Google map.
You can see that.
So in your opinion, Larry, does this, does this need a variance?
No, if it's a structure placed on concrete foundation, I would say that's a permanent structure. These other sheds have not been, they open on skids and portable little buildings.
All right. Any other questions? Can you make your motion?
So do.
I'll say it.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve the end cap extension for I34. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? Motion carries six to the right. Okay, the next one is for J23.
And the lake committee is recommending an end cap extension of 90 feet for construction of a 36 by 36 garage.
Okay, anybody have questions about this one?
That's kind of weird one too, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a similar deal, almost.
And so does that move it out to, so it lines up with the one next to it? I don't know which direction that is, but the one right next to it, but it's standing quite a little past it.
Yeah.
So almost eases it up with it? I can't, I didn't know that.
Yeah, we'll be close to that, yeah, when you look at the...
I couldn't tell by those drawings very well, but...
And this is another case, going to the ravine.
Yeah, a lot of those trees are actually gonna be moved out of there, so they can put this in, so it drops off. The closer you go to the cabin, the ravine drops off, and then as you go back into them trees, it kind of, still goes down, but it doesn't go down quite as fast, so they really need to get back in that area if they're gonna build.
Where's their driveway at there now? There isn't one, huh?
That's that highlighted area that comes in, that's the light colored, follows the tree line coming in from the ravine.
Oh, is that, okay, that's, this looks different than the other side.
Any other questions? Do I make a motion?
So do.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay, moved in second to approve the end cap extension for J23. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six to the right. Thank you. Do you make that motion? Keith? City Lake Committee recommendation, variance request for J21.
All right, Lake Committee recommends, oh, let's see, recommend council approval variance request to the 100-foot high water set back from, according to construction of 21 by 27 by nine garage.
This one is a, Larry, you're familiar with that, because the lake actually bends around, and that's why it approaches on the 100-foot mark, but it's actually right line with the house. It's sitting right next to the house, but because of the lake has a little finger right there, it gets too, too close to the 100-foot on that one corner.
It's the back corner, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on the front, it's the back area there.
And that actually is sitting right next to the house, on the same exact level, and it's already leveled out, and it's a driveway right now, and they're just wanting to build the garage right there where the driveway is. It's where they park now, it's already leveled out.
So it's high enough, it's just not...
Yeah, oh yeah, it's high, it's the same height as a, as a house, yeah, it's way up on the hill, but it's just the way the lake, there's just a little inlet back there that turns and goes back in.
Anybody have any questions?
The neighbors are okay with it? I don't see any letters or anything.
It won't affect any of the neighbors at all.
Okay.
I don't think there are neighbors on the, well, if you look at this picture here...
Water one side, I don't think so.
Yeah, and then the other side, it's completely hidden from the other house, and...
The tree line over there.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve the variance request for J21. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six to the right. Okay, it's probably we left them separately. Yeah.
Different situation.
Yeah, everyone wants a bid for it.
Riverwalk Committee recommendation for concrete work bid.
So it's been about, like, three or four weeks now, the Lake Committee, not Lake Committee, Riverwalk Committee met down there at the amphitheater, and we're kind of to the phase where we need to have stairs put in, and do the concrete pad and the stage, and so I'm working with Jeff, we're also coming up with a bid sheet in order to put out bids, and the council approval to do so, so that's what we're asking, the committee's asking for.
Anybody have any questions about this?
It'll also be the concrete apron between the row, first row and the stage, and there'll be a trench drain that goes through there, it'll take all the water away too, so.
It's looking really good.
Starting to see some progress.
I mean, once this is done, it'll really start taking shape, and this will, this devil big dig.
I invited 337 of my Facebook friends, my finger got tired, so I quit, but to, yeah, I'm doing today, the donation page is now up on Facebook.
Yeah, that's all that.
Sweet, I'll let my mom know. I'll let my mom know.
Yes, yes.
This also will include the information for the rails on the three runs of steps and lighting out some of it. I like the idea of the lighting on those steps underneath those rails or whatever, how we're gonna do it.
Jeff says that it's best to have that whoever's gonna do the stairs do the railing too, because if you have two different groups, something, something doesn't fit, you know, so.
It's funny.
So you need a motion? I would make a motion that we give the biz of, under Riverwalk Committee recommendation for the concrete work and the railing and some steps.
I'll second. I'll second that.
Okay. Moved to second end to get bids on the concrete work as recommended by the Riverwalk Committee. All those in favor? Opposed? Very good, motion carries. Memorial tree program, Mark?
A while back, I asked the mayor if I could kind of run with this. In the past, when the Riverwalk was first put in, there was a memorial tree program. And you've seen the trees that have a washed river rock at the base with a name engraved into it. So I've thrown together some information here. I contacted Chris Gant out here at her nursery out east of town, and she's given me some prices on some trees. My proposal to the council is that we only do four varieties of oaks. The birr, the northern red, the northern rich schumer, and the swamp white oak. And I have a, how big these trees will get. These trees will last two to three hundred years if they, you know, if they live beyond infancy. The size of the trees she recommended was six to eight feet. They have a better mortality, or not a mortality rate, but they live longer. Larger trees tend not to make it that first year or two. The cost of those oaks run between eighty and a hundred and twenty dollars for that. I found a source for, they're called medium river rocks in Manhattan, at a nursery up there. And I bought one, I brought it in here to City Hall. I brought it in here because it was rolling around the back of my truck.
I wondered what that was in here.
That's twenty dollars for that rock right there. And they're different shapes, you know, as you would expect with rocks. So twenty dollars for a rock. Eck monuments out of Gardner, I believe it's Gardner, Kansas, were the ones that did them for us prior. And they charge two dollars per letter and additional two dollars if they're two-inch tall lettering. So I have an example here of in memory of Dennis Delay, which is twenty-one letters, two dollars each. It'd be forty-two dollars, and then just double that if you want to. So basically, my thought here is to make this as simple as possible, that someone would come in here to City Hall and get a form that would already be made up, and they would pay five hundred, or three hundred dollars. And that would include the tree, the rock, the etching, the planting, and watering for a year. The city would take care of the tree for a year. And then there would be no guarantees beyond that for the tree. My thought is if the mayor would select a small committee out of the council to go to our parks and actually mark where we want trees to be planted, so that if Jane Doe comes in and says she wants one for her late husband, a map can be shown, where would you like it planted? And she can pick a spot where we've already pre-selected that these trees be planted. I think the simplest process on this is the best. And I think a flat fee is the best, too. Just three hundred dollars, that gets you a tree.
I think you've got a wise idea there because I've already had someone say to me that their group wanted to do a tree in a memorial and they wanted it a certain place, they wanted it to bloom a certain way, and I said, wait, 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 you know?
Yeah, so that's the problem we had with the last program. They allowed the donor to pick these exotic trees that aren't made to live here very well. And this was a town, this was, this valley was all hardwood trees. And I would encourage us to look at good, solid oaks. We are not going to benefit from them as well as generations down the road. But if we put in the work now, in the future, it'll show. And actually, you'll be surprised, some of these little oaks that Ken McHannick has planted have grown incredibly well. So he's got them all over town that he's planted.
With proper fertilizer and water, they grow pretty well that first couple of years, I think, right? Most little trees do.
And I'm going to negotiate with, if we decide to do this, I'm going to negotiate with the nursery to see if we can get a better break on multiple stones. My thought is maybe if we implement this program, then maybe we buy, you know, twenty of them and then have city crews go ahead and take them to the etching company. And that way, they're on site there, and all we have to do is contact them and say, this is, we need one with this on it, and they'll have the stones there in place. Danny told me that's how they did it in the past, that they just bought a pallet of stones and took them to the tombstone company, and they were on site, so. But that's what I've come up with, and that's for you guys to kind of think about.
So what do we do if two years out the tree dies?
Then it's done. There's no guarantee that we'll replace it. So I guess we can contact the original donor and ask them if they want to buy another one to put back in there.
Do the trees come with any kind of, if they die in a year, we'll replace it?
Usually, I don't think you can find anything like that, yeah.
Most of the nurseries do.
Do they?
I think they do.
Well, she didn't mention anything like that to me anyway. That's something I can look into.
You might ask her, because of the program that we're doing here, you know, even if there's an extra ten dollars or twenty dollars to buy a tree to get us five years.
Right.
Because, you know, after five years, that tree's established. It's either going to, something's going to go wrong with it in that first...
Well, Danny said the problem with the program in the past was they would replace them. And they were constantly, that tree would die, they'd put another one in, and then they would die. And they'd put another tree in there, and it would just became a money pit for the city. And that's why I only, in my recommendation, we only guarantee them for one year.
Were they getting watered the last time they tried this?
You know, I don't know the great details on them, sorry, councilman, I don't know.
I was told that it was because they were trees that were indigenous.
Yeah.
You know, and some of them, they couldn't even plant them the second time. Like there was some kind of exotic blooming tree or something, and they couldn't even get them again. They did not know where to go get them, or the prices had gone up, so.
We have multiple parks that are in need of trees. Riverwalk now has, you know, had several large trees removed. The playground equipment down there is not shaded at all. There's a lot of avenues there. Benai Smithfield and the Ballfields, that whole park needs lots of trees. I'm sure we can find places in Derlin and Council Oak Park and so on. But that's my recommendation. There's a little bit of extra money in there to help offset the cost of the planning, planting and watering, roughly around eighty dollars is what I have figured in with my calculations.
I have one question, councilman. If a tree dies and is not replaced, what about the stone that's there? Is that spot now available for someone else? Or if the tree goes, the stone goes?
I think you should offer it back to the family and see if they want to replace the tree. That would be my thought. And then if they don't, then I would say we give them the stone, and then that spot comes open for another donor.
That's what I want.
I would think for that.
Because they paid for it originally.
Right.
Spot, but this one didn't want to replace the tree.
Yeah, I would say if they don't want to buy the tree, and maybe in that case, if they'll just pay for the tree, and maybe the city would plant it for no cost and to replace it. They're not really that expensive. They, I was surprised, the cost of the trees weren't that bad.
Now, is this the city planting the tree?
Yes.
Or is it Chris?
No, this would be the city crews planting the trees. We have the equipment, wouldn't take long to plant a six to eight-foot tree.
No.
Little backhoe would do that in no time at all. And then I would think we'd want to stake them, you know, guideline it with the holding place. I already have, Class of nineteen seventy-six has already contacted me. They want to do one in memory of Dennis Delay. There's already been a wildlife group that's already bought a tree that they want for Dennis Delay. And I will donate that stone to that effort for the first group that's bought that to help offset the cost for that one, since it happened really before the program was established.
Yeah.
I like it.
Just an additional question. When you talked to Chris, did you discuss with her the possibility of her using things from the Council of Junior and starting trees for us?
I did not. She has a supplier of trees, and she has some of these already on hand now. And my conversation with her was if we had implemented, maybe there'll be a few this fall that can use up the stock that she has now. And then maybe by spring, we'll have an order for multiple trees that she can order. She doesn't want to order a bunch of trees when she doesn't know they're going to be sold. And she has like a two thousand dollar minimum of trees that she has to buy. So I thought if we can use up what she has now, because this is a perfect time to plant trees, if, use up what she has, and then again, have the forms here in City Hall. Maybe we can even put it on our web, on our website. So where somebody can go on and get all the details. But my, I don't know, council might think differently. I just think simple is the best on this, is the simple thing.
I was just thinking, in the future, if we get somebody to start those trees, we might have, you know, a stock...
Right. Well, I'll listen with her about it, maybe she might...
That's a future thing.
Yeah, so.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to start a memorial tree program?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Moved to second end to start a memorial tree program. I'm assuming it was the program that Marcus mentioned, I should ask that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is that okay, Sharon?
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't hurt my feelings if you guys want to change something here. I just had to start somewhere, so.
Well, I'm sure we'll make adjustments as we see them.
Sure.
So the mayor would then need to appoint a committee? The committee's going to come up with the form?
I would like for Mark to pick out the committee.
Okay. All right, I'll come up with somebody.
Okay.
And I could probably...
And then I'll mark one.
Yeah.
But we do need to locate the spots, because like I say, there's two trees right now that need to be put in the ground during the next, this month or so, so.
Okay. Any other questions or anything? Okay, all those in favor?
Yes, I can do that.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Great.
I do have a question to council. Is it okay if we negotiate to get a large amount of these stones and do that and send them to the tombstone company? All right, I'll look into that.
Got to go into under parks, probably. Okay, next is the appointment of city attorney, Bill Haverson. At this time, I would like to appoint him to city attorney at a payroll of twenty-six hundred dollars per month. And I want to have a motion to approve that appointment.
So move.
Second? Moved to second end to appoint a new city attorney, Bill Haverson. All those in favor? Opposed?
Welcome to work.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Ford are working like it.
Yep. We'll try to be nice to you. Okay, let's start with Jason Booker. Do you have any, do you have anybody comments?
I do not.
Okay. Mark Burner?
No, thank you.
Okay. Keith?
All I want to do is just give everybody a round of applause for all the efforts of getting all the projects going. I think, like Jesse pointed out, I think there's a lot of good things happening right now. And I think the timing's great. We've been blessed with some really nice weather to get the stuff in, to water, and I think everybody's doing a great job. So I like that.
Okay. Mark?
I'd like to kind of, Mayor Keith's comments. I'd like to praise our city administrator. I think he's done an excellent job on these projects. He's stayed on top of these projects. He's caught problems with what's going on uptown and enforced the companies to correct it. I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you, Bill, appreciate that.
And then my next comment is, you probably won't like.
So is it good?
The signs for the no self-use in town. We've passed an ordinance. Are we going to, are we going to keep that ordinance on the books? Are we going to put signs up to say hands-free in Council Grove? What are we going to do?
Let me give you my opinion. I think it's really hard to enforce. I really do, I don't, I didn't agree with it when it was passed, based off of the reasons it was passed for. Because the phone wasn't what caused that, it was hit by the car. She was not paying attention and ran into the car, so.
Well, I voted against it too. Council on Russell voted against it.
I just didn't agree. We need to really look at it. But I think the way, you mirrored what was done in the city of Manhattan, and the way it's done in the city of Manhattan is that the officers discretion. And the reason for that is you have to be able to prove in court that they're on the phone, which is hard to do, and Bill can probably speak to that.
They also have cameras on all of their...
They have cameras too.
Stop signs, stoplights, so they have a little bit more teeth into it.
I think it's a hard thing to do, because I think all of us do it. We're on our phones, because we're all busy and I don't think you should text in or write back in your entry or...
Well, there's already a law in place. That was one of the reasons why I heard that there's already a state law about texting. That's already on the books.
So we're just duplicating what's already being done.
My point is, we have passed it, and what are we going to do?
Is there a process for taking it back off the books?
Yeah, you can make a motion at any time to take it off, to get away with an ordinance.
Unpeel it.
Unpeel it.
Is there a problem with, Bill, I'm going to ask you this. Is there a problem with having the ordinance and it not being strictly enforced?
Well, no, other than I think Mark's point is a good one, that it just clutters the books up and, you know, has basically no practical effect.
Yeah, we're going to say, have an ordinance, basically.
If we're going to have it, we need to put the signs up. You know, because the time, the one time that our officers do stop somebody, they're going to say, there's no signings of...
I know.
Probably in court, they could probably get that tossed out in a heartbeat.
Some kind of selective enforcement theory.
Yeah.
And because, I mean, I haven't paid attention, but I'm sure it's probably like anywhere else, it probably, it doesn't violate that they're right now while we're speaking.
Oh, I see it on a daily basis, but if, if we're not going to enforce it, why have it on the books? That's my...
I mean, I think we can encourage it, just as common sense not to do something.
Right.
So if we don't want to put signs at the entrances of our town, then we can probably take it back.
I wonder if we should, I'm just throwing this out here. If we should put this off to the next meeting, allow the citizens of Council Grove at the time to get ahold of their councilman and the mayor and see what their thoughts are. I don't know.
Make an appointment, put it in the notes of the meeting that we're seeking to put this in.
That was discussed, yes.
That's a good idea.
Okay.
You got that, Marcus?
Thank you.
Other than that, I'm tickled again with the progress that's going on here in this community. I'm proud of this council for what they've done. And this is no offense to Councilman Booker over there, we're not a bank. We're not, you know, we don't collect money to just hoard it. We collect the middle levy to improve our city. And I think this council has done an excellent job in doing that. So I congratulate each and every one of you. So I like it.
Okay.
Nothing to say anything.
Well, I'd just like to encourage you, when you see Jeff Loser, to say thank you because he is making amphitheater work down there. And thanks to the city crew, they're down there and they have been contributing a lot of...
Yeah, they've been doing a lot of dirt work. And they set the third row of the CD.
They finished the third and started the fourth.
Yeah, they're just going to be down there Thursday and Friday, and the street carton guys are going to be down there helping him sit. He wants to sit five rows, he wants to go up to five rows now. So they're going to try to set two rows on Thursday, Friday, so.
Has the stone quality improved since...
Yeah, so what we found out is that the stone that is not in good shape, we can actually send back. So that's what we're going to do. And they've been told, the place we're buying it from, we're telling them, let me get a certain type of stone. So if you have jumpstone, please don't include it.
If we're going to send it back anyway? If we're gonna send it back anyway?
Yeah. So, the other thing is, we can sell it. I think the stones are $38 a piece or something like that, all. So if somebody wants some stones for their yard or something, instead of paying, put fetus in them back, somebody can do something like, or we can use them like, I'll tell you, one of the things I don't like about our apartments is our split rail fence. I hate them, because we always have to fix them. And my thought has always been, big limestone rocks like that in line, the areas of the apartments with limestone. I know that's one thing we talked about, Andrew, at the Riverwalk up there, where we had a split rail fence, putting big limestone blocks out there, and having a partner, somebody cut the middle out of them, so you can plant flowers on them, or grass.
Or maybe do a planter, then a seat, then a planter, then a seat, so people can actually settle on that edge if they're walking around.
That's a good idea.
How many they got to get set up out of there?
Oh, it's probably 15 of them. 15, 20. Like I said, the stone's only, I think they're $38 a piece. Well, we always have trouble down here at the Ballfields, where people run into them and break them, and I just don't...
You do split rail, fantasy rail, you do.
Yeah. Well, if they hit the limestone, limestone's...
Limestone's gonna win.
It's gonna win, for sure.
We have the same problem over at Crim Park, on there, that, that's always getting run into or rotted out or whatever, so...
A lot of companies, and these companies might not do that, but a lot of companies will, if it's something that's kind of faulty or seconds or something, they might take half price for them, just tell them, you know, if they'll just take half price, we'll just keep them.
Yeah.
You know, instead of...
We're getting such a good deal on them, this company's not gonna do that. I mean, we're getting a steel deal on this rock, and they're getting all this stone that's...
Plus our haul line.
Plus our haul line's really cheap too, so it is, we're, we're getting a heck of a deal.
Good.
They did not realize it. I think those prefab ones, to do all this seating was over 80 grand. To do all this seating here with this stone is, I think, what was it, 30, 30 or 36,000? That's the difference in the cost savings, so it's, it's considerable amount.
And some of them are gonna need a little, I, I worked one day on knocking some of the high spots off with a chisel. There's some, some of that's gonna have to be done, but like Jeff said, you know, the bottom line is that you're gonna be sitting on a stump. I mean, you know, but there are some high spots that's gonna make it a little uncomfortable that needs to be knocked off there. But the way it's set up, there's enough space between the seating that you can set up a back chair too, so you don't have to sit on those stumps, so...
It looks pretty good. I wasn't sure when we had the first row going in, how, you just couldn't visualize it, but once you get the first, second, third row in there, it looks pretty neat.
So once that concrete's poured and the first section of stairs, I think it's really gonna, that's really, it's really gonna pop, you know, so...
Good thing.
Anyways, I saw you were good on the usual side.
No, I just, but I, I just want you to recognize Jeff, because if he, if this hadn't happened, I mean, I asked him how much Phil had come in, and he estimated that, and there's been more census, probably at least 450 feet dump loads of Phil and dirt that have come in down there, and that's all freebie.
Yeah.
So it's just, it's amazing what we've been able to pull together down there.
Jeff is a master at being able to find things like that.
Figure it out.
Yeah, he's just...
It's just pretty exciting to see that from them. It is, that's good.
Okay. Um, Bill, do you have anything?
I have.
Okay. Nick?
Just one thing, I've been in contact with CTS. The kickoff meeting is scheduled for October 20th at 10:00 a.m. here at City Hall with them, and after that, they're planning on even starting on meter replacement and, and the project as a whole, so...
Say that date and time again?
It is October 20th at 10:00 a.m.
Here in City Hall?
Yes. And then Christie, for CTS, she's gonna be, her office is gonna be over at the Armory in that building there, because she needs a place to set up in order to track everything, make sure she's getting all her stuff done. So we're gonna set up over there at the Armory, that way she's not close puxing into anybody. That's going on.
Okay. I don't think that I have anything with safety either, so I will, air pan, move to trigger.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Move to second to, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?